I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, we'll now call a roll.
Councilmember Helfrich.
Here.
Councilmember Holmstrom.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Storm.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Masters. Yes, thank you Kathy. First of all, I'd just like to thank all of our guests for being here, participating in our meeting tonight. You are an important part of our decision-making process, so we thank you for being here. If you did wish to address the council on any of our agenda items, or even something that's not on our agenda, the process is to sign in on this report, just indicate where you'd like to be called on, and we will do that. Is there anyone else? Like most of you have a chance. Did yours? For which one? Oh, first. So we'll move now to second item on our agenda, which is additions or amendments to the agenda. Ordinarily, at this point, I turn to our interim city administrator, Paul Cook, and ask him if he has any suggestions. But as you can see, he's not here tonight. He came down with a case of food poisoning, so we felt better for him to stay home. But I will turn it over to any council member that would like to suggest any additions or changes, amendments to our agenda. Okay, Jeff?
I'd like to move action item E, the approval of the ordinance 418, to the top of the agenda, which is the vacationing of the portion of Hasselo Street.
Okay. Would there be any objection to that from anyone? Okay, so it just gets closer to the hearing on the same topic. Ruben, you okay with that?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, any others? Okay, we will make that adjustment, so when we get to item number five, rather than go in the order that's listed, we will start with approval of ordinance 418, and then proceed in order. Okay? Another item, when we get down to reports and presentations, 7B, we've got Paul's regular staff report. I've attempted to piece together a few items that would have otherwise been in his report. I don't really have a handout, there's a few materials on your desks about that, but don't be expecting that handout, as we usually do. And have no other amendments to the agenda. So next item coming to the floor is the adoption of the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the July 9th council meeting, the minutes of the June 7th joint city port meeting, ratification of the bills in the amount of $158,531.16, and the approval of a contract amendment with Zasnawski and Cleveland. Okay? Next step is for a motion and second from the council for adoption of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Brad.
Second.
Second, Jeff? Any discussion? Okay, so now we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is a public hearing, and it's a public hearing for the vacation of a portion of Hasselo Street. Kathy, would you just do a brief introduction to that hearing, and then I'll open the hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on that issue, you can, as part of a public hearing, say what you want to say.
Okay, Mr. Chair and Council, as you're aware, as of last meeting, two meetings ago, Mr. Coe was here with his petition, and council set the hearing date for tonight, and so we'll be releasing the testimony from Mr. Coe, proponents and opponents.
Okay, so I'll now open the public hearing on the vacation of a portion of Hasselo Street. Mr. Coe, do speak first, please.
Good evening, members of the council. I believe many of you now know me. My name is Michael Coe. I'm the owner of the residence at 139 Northwest Hasselo Street here in Cascade Locks. I'm hearing before you again this evening as the co-petitioner and moving party in a street portion vacation request pursuant to ORS 271.080. A complete text of the legal description of the street portion to be conveyed by ordinance was provided to the city last Friday by my surveyor Leo Sandoval of Klein and Associates, and is referenced with my application in this matter. In keeping with this statutory scheme, a detailed plat map containing all of the required application information has also been filed with the city. But the survey map, the final survey map to be recorded following approval of the vacation ordinance, will be further amended to reflect an allocation of the street vacation land among three abutting property owners, rather than two. This is pursuant to a discussion I had this afternoon with Stan Foster representing the city, who indicated that because a portion of the 15 feet on the western side of the vacation property abuts Mr. Zerfing's lot, it will have to adhere to his lot upon vacation. So essentially, we have a tripartite vacation. This is owing to the fact that the three lots originally contributed to the street dedication that gave birth to this portion of Northwest Hasselo Street, specifically my lot, number 2500, Ms. Kitchens' lot, number 2000, and the parcel now belonging to Carl Zerfing, lot 2604. And I have amended my exhibit solely for the purpose of illustrating this final allocation of the vacation land, and so I believe in your packet this evening, you received this exhibit.
Yes.
But I took the liberty of extending my property line, or proposed property line, post-vacation to exclude this pink portion, and my apologies to my new best friend Carl Zerfing, that you have to have the pink portion, but that will represent the portion that will be annexed to Mr. Zerfing's property if the vacation is approved.
You're making them turn red.
Mr. Zerfing's attendance here, by the way, together with his signature as an abutting owner in the original petition, is intended to evidence his consent hereto. I would also like to augment the petition that I submitted at this time by offering one additional reason for this vacation action. This wasn't, not an original inspiration, it actually came to me in conversations that I'd had with Chuck Dottry. And he stated that to do so, or to buy this action that we're seeking, it will mitigate the city's exposure for claims that could otherwise arise on unmaintained lands. And he has some experience in this particular area, having been the general manager of the Port of Vancouver, who had a number of unmaintained parcels, and as it turned out, they had two occasions where lawsuits were brought by citizens who had gone onto those unmaintained properties and either were injured or found some other reason to bring suit against the port. But in essence, by approval of this vacation, the city shifts the risk of potential claim liability onto private landowners while simultaneously creating a future tax revenue stream. So having met the historical statutory court commission review and effective community majority approval criteria for this vacation, I would respectfully request the council's allowance of the petition as amended, and adoption of proposed city ordinance, number 418, vacating the city's interest in this portion of Northwest Hasselo Street. And I thank you for this opportunity to appear. Do you have any questions to meet at this time?
Thank you. Okay, as part of this public hearing, if there's anyone here who would like to speak and have their comments entered into the record from the hearing, you can do something else. Okay? All right, so before I close the hearing, if there's any questions or underlying concerns that the council has, rather than close the hearing, we could continue the hearing if you'd like to find out more information. Would there be anyone interested in that? Okay, so at this point, I'll close the hearing. And we'll move now to our action agenda. And as we indicated in the beginning, Jeff's suggestion that we move item 5E to the top of our action items. I'll draw your attention to the staff report listed as 5E in your packet. We've already heard a brief explanation of that, Kathy, and a more detailed explanation from Mr. Coe. This is, and Kathy, help me out here, if we need help following the correct order of procedure, but this will be the first reading, and how that goes is if we have a motion and second from the council, we will then conduct the first reading, and then the second reading will come at a subsequent council meeting, along with a discussion and others. So I think that'll do it for the staff report, unless Ruben or Kathy, you have something to add.
Well, I just want to remind people of the council that the main things that you're considering here are the, whether there's objections, the, whether there's consent of the adjoining and neighboring landowners, whether notice has been duly given that this hearing is taking place tonight, and whether there's a public interest that's prejudiced. Those are the criteria for you to consider at this.
So the issue about the city's easement, that goes through that property, I mean, that would fall under the issue of public interest. Could you just explain about that?
Well, generally, and as Mr. Coe presented, there is a utility easement on the property. However, the legal description provided with the street vacation does not have the easement in it. We are not vacating the easement, we have no intention of vacating the easement. All, any public or private entity or utility that has an easement benefiting it on that land is going to be retained.
It's going to be what?
Retained.
Yeah, okay.
So we're taking the omission of the easement language in the legal description of the property as not something that's being vacated, it's outside of the scope of the vacation.
Okay. And Mr. Coe, that's your understanding as well?
My understanding is that the vacation would take place subject to or upon condition that prior to final vesting, I would submit an easement for approval to the city that would evidence and recite the city's continuing interest in the utility's easement.
Okay, so we'll move now to comments, and it's on Mr. Coe, that you signed up to talk again here. Is that something that you wanted to do again, or did you cover it all for us within the hearing?
I might only just supplement city's council, city council's comment. In my conversations with Leo Sandoval, and following the discussion I'd had with Stan Foster representing the city this afternoon, what was indicated is this description didn't need to be changed in that it accurately describes the totality of the lands sought to be vacated. The only change will be the plat map, which will designate the reallocation among the three abutting property owners, and then supplemented by the utility's easement. So exhibit A, the text of the legal description won't change, at least is not slated to change, as far as I'm aware.
Understood, and I... I think what Mr. Coe is saying is that the legal description will change as it goes to the abutting landowners, as well.
Well, the individual, the individual legal descriptions will, but in terms of what is being vacated, this is an actual, or an act, or a representation of what is being sought to be vacated. Does that make sense?
Yes.
This is the total amount of land that is being sought in the petition to vacate.
Absolutely.
What happens after is separate.
Agreed.
So I hope you'll put together, Ruben, just a clarifying memo for us about what's happening with the easement, when we bring this back in the second reading.
And how it's divided and such.
Okay. Okay, so next step is for council motion and second, and then we'll proceed to the first reading.
Excuse me, question. Now, we can approve this in one night if it's unanimous.
It hasn't been noticed for seven days.
Okay, so that wouldn't make a difference.
So we need a motion and a second to proceed to the first reading.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 418, vacating portion of Hasselo Street by vesting of title.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it, okay. Ruben, would you read the first reading by title, or?
Just an ordinance vacating portion of Hasselo Street and providing for the vesting title.
Great, so that's our first reading, and we'll come back with a discussion, second reading, or second reading discussion and vote at a future council meeting. Okay? Thank you. We'll move now back to action item 5A, which is approval of a letter of support for signing the historic highway. Kathy, I understand you did a staff report, you know it's in our packet, and I'm sure that we've all had a chance to review that, so would you, if you have anything to add, could you just do that at this point?
I have nothing to add to the staff report and the voters in their packet, if anything.
This is something that we did not have anyone sign up to comment on, so the next step will be a council motion and second.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of support for the historic highway signage.
Second. Okay, motion by Brad, second by Randy. Council question, comment, or discussion? So now we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the letter of support signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we'll turn now to action item 5B, Bureau of Resolution 1245, calling for an election. Another staff report also included in our packet. I'm sure that we've all had a chance to review this, but Ruben, if there's anything you'd like to add to the staff report, would you please do that now?
Okay, basically, this would just be a referral to the voters about title language, and the explanatory statement are included, those would be the statements that would be going in the vote of the panel.
Okay. Okay, then, we did not have anyone sign up for a comment on this, so the next step is for a council motion and second.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 1245.
Okay, motion's been made by Brad, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mark. Okay, any council question, comment, or discussion?
Councilmember Lorraine, can I have just one?
Well, he raised his hand, maybe he don't want to, I don't care.
Okay, I just heard.
Yeah.
He raised his hand before Jeff did.
Back in school.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah. For me, I don't see the need of this. I think that the way the thing is set up, it doesn't say anything about rates, or rates is, we know is something that, like everybody believes, can't be taken up. A bond will pass as something along to you, that's, I think, crease of rates, if the TV people pass something, that's an increase of a rate deal, which isn't a fee tax or charge. I think we already do that with garbage, the garbage guys come to us and they need a raise in their rate, and we pass that, pass it along with citizens, and nobody's challenged with it. I don't think, I think there would be a challenge to rate, we've never approached it from the rate side, and part of what I don't get about this is, in five years, we've been through several different things like this, where we've said something is ambiguous, we can't figure out what the thing means, but what it is, and we're trying to zero in it. And in my opinion, I think we always didn't understand what it meant, what it meant, we just wanted to change it. The council wanted to change, administration wanted to change it, so they gave the speak of, we don't understand it, we're going to clarify it, and we can continue to do that. As soon as we do this, and if there's anything we don't like about it, then we're going to change the wording and say we don't understand it either. Because of my opinion, we don't seem to, on the one hand here, we're, we seem to understand, and we're putting this ordinance out to a vote, to where we understand that we're allowing a part of it, we're adding the rate part of it, but along with that, we're still saying, you have to take a vote on charges, fees, and taxes, and we all seem to understand that, but yet the council has passed resolutions to add fees and charges, so it's like they don't get, for some reason, we don't get our own resolution, our own ordinance, our own, so to me, it doesn't do any good to do this. We don't understand what's going on here anyway, because we're not abiding, we're not abiding by the ordinance that's already there, we're not abiding by the charter that's already there, because we've done things against that charter. So why are we spending the time doing this, when in reality, I believe we can, if the rates go up, we can have rates. A rate is, an example, where I can see a rate is bond, we pay, what, seven cents a total lot out, whatever, per bond. Rate is to change that total lot cents and out. It's not to change a lot of the fees that go along, all the extra fees and charges and taxes that go along with that, to change the franchise fees. In fact, we, or to change, we don't call it franchise fees, what we do now is we just change the name of it, it's an internal payment. Started as a franchise fees, now it's an internal payment. So that's what we do with things, we just keep changing the wording, and then we can go down whatever road we want to go with it. So for me, I don't see the need of this, this is just, we're wasting our time sending this to the citizens, because the fact is, we can't raise rates. And the fact is, from this council, even though the charter says you can't raise fees, we raise fees. So what does any of this mean? I don't get it. That's what I'm...
Further comment, question, or discussion?
Okay, one thing, I think it's worth pointing out, the garbage service is what's called a franchise, so the company that hauls garbage in Cascade Locks pays a franchise fee because they're a business collecting garbage from the residents, businesses in Cascade Locks. And I think there's a difference between a franchise that's doing that, that's paying a fee, and city-owned utility, which is why there's a requirement in state law that municipal-owned utilities pay, make an internal payment in lieu of a franchise fee, so that there's an even blame film. So it's actually, you know, there's a difference, but we're still required to do those internal payments, which is the name that comes directly out of state law. So I mean, I definitely support this, I think it's certainly something that's been recommended to us by our legal counsel, and I think that if you ignore your advice from your legal counsel, then you're probably treading into dangerous waters, so.
So you have no further comments or discussion, we proceed to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll turn now to item 5C, which is resolution 1246. Once again, there's a staff report that's been included in our packet, I trust we've all had a chance to review that. Ruben, if you have anything to add to that staff report, clarify anything, I think you can do that now.
Okay, this is the same as the other one, it, not the same in substance, but in that it, the same in that it will be a referral to the voters regarding some utilities, and I believe the ballot title language should be in that, or is that? Ballot title language is not in that, but it should be.
Well, what it says in section four of resolution 1246 is the city elections officer will publish ballot title as provided by state law, so, and file this measure with the Republican Elections Office. So it can be, a title can be, according to this, it sounds like a title would be published separately. Is that correct? Ruben?
I don't know if that's the way that I wrote this and sent it in. So I guess you can go ahead, and if we have to do something at the next meeting, so be it.
So your understanding is that there needs to be a ballot title on this, or can it be done both ways? And it's going to be you writing ballot title anyway?
Correct, yes, I mean, go ahead, and if we have to do a ballot title, I would say that we can go back and supplement with another resolution that has the ballot title.
Okay. Okay, so this is also a, an item, we did not have anyone ask to comment to the council, so the next step will be for council motion and second. Mark?
Motion that the city council approve resolution 1246, referring to this matter to the voters at the election in November 2012. referring to this matter to the voters at the election in November 2012.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this time Jeff had the second. Time for council comment, question, or discussion. Tom?
Yeah, again, on this one, this one, I'm glad we're referring to the voters, since at least we are following them, we're along on that one. But we set ourselves up, and that's where I see it on this, is we've got the very same thing. Right now, we stuck it on, we stuck it on water. And, but it appears to me that the water doesn't have enough customers, so we want more money. So let's put it on electrical, who has a lot more customers. And we could basically reach all the way to Bridalvale and take money from Bridalvale to all pay, all the way down the line to pay for this. And again, it's been mentioned that from the council, that if you don't support this, if the citizens don't support this, they don't support the fire department, they don't support the volunteers. Frankly, I look at this thing as just another opportunity to get money and dump it down a hole. Because there's nothing in here, there's nothing that I've seen anybody do that, a little bit down the stretch here, the potential of how we administrate, how we manage the monies, that it's all not just going to plain disappear, and you're not going to get the services that you think you're going to be getting out of it. It's just my opinion on it. But again, we're putting it out there, but I don't think the money, again, we have to show that we can handle the money well. And until we do that, until I'm, from my side, I'm convinced we can do that, I'm not comfortable with it. And again, I think we're taking it from way beyond our city limit, where our jurisdictions go on it. And I think we're going to have issues from those people who are outside. I think we're just setting ourselves up for a lawsuit that could be wasting our, again, wasting our legal money over something we shouldn't be wasting our legal money over. So I'm not in favor of that one either.
Further question, comment, or discussion? Gail?
Yeah, a couple things, I guess. One, I think any of the revenue that's generated for fire and ambulance is not being dumped into a hole as long as the council does their job of monitoring finances properly. And the other thing is, I'm not sure that this is going to mean more money for fire and ambulance. What I would look for is, since we can spread the base of those that would be subject to payment, that we would look to collect the same amount of money, but each participant would pay less. So we still haven't had those debates, but that's where my mind's at on this. Anyway, that's my comment.
Okay, Jeff?
Echo what Gail had said, that this spreads it out to the end user, which is going to be, everybody that has electrical meters, basically, who would use our services, other than visitors to the community or visitors outside of our community that are traveling through the I-84 corridor. But also, it is, it's a vote to the people to let the people decide how they want to support and fund firing EMS. We've had regional experts come in and say, this is what we need. We've listened to those experts. And now we're taking that advice and moving forward in letting the people decide what they would like. So that's what I have. Thank you.
Fred? Yeah, Tom?
Yeah, just, I agree, I agree, but that's my issue. My issue is, I don't, I haven't seen the council. I haven't seen the council, I haven't seen the administration. I've seen an interim, if I've seen an interim administrator, administrator do the things we need to do. I'm not sure I've seen the council do it. And that's my problem. So it's easy to say, easy to say, yes, council's going to do the right thing. I just haven't seen it, we're just not doing things, and we haven't shown, in my opinion, that we're doing the right things. And another thing, it's easy to say, we've all heard that before too, is, we're spreading out amongst people. Well, I'm sorry, that's not the way it goes. Once you get started to them, folks, that's what, once they get started to you, it goes up. It doesn't stop. And once they got more people, they add more money to it, and they add more money to it, because it gets mismanaged. And that's where I'm at on that.
Jeff?
I've heard no one else in this council give another idea of what we should do. This is the first time anybody's come before with a solution, listening to what the citizens are doing. So if somebody else had a better idea, they had a chance and opportunity to talk about it. It didn't happen.
Kathy, I apologize for not asking you this question before, but it did just come up. Could, I don't know, you know, could you tell me, do we deliver electricity all the way to Bridalvale? We do, okay. So we're delivering electricity to those folks? Okay, so whatever, so we're actually, they'll pay for it as well, right? They get a utility bill, it goes to people living in Bridalvale. Okay. And Bridalvale's also within our response area for both fire and ambulance. So there's actually a connection between fire suppression, electricity delivery, and utility bills in Bridalvale?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. How is Bridalvale? As I understand, Bridalvale's a part of Monmouth County. And we have a contract with Monmouth County to the east side or west side of Monmouth Falls, which is a long ways from Bridalvale. So where's, I want to see something that says we get coverage all the way to Bridalvale. It seems to me Bridalvale's probably, we may have, not the front line, we may be tied in with Corbin as far as assisting with our places, and we're part of that. But I don't think, I personally don't think, I want to see it, if Bridalvale is a place that we don't. As far as I know, that's Monmouth County, and we're good to Monmouth Falls, and that's it.
We send all of our South Bank customers every year. We have a resolution, we just did it, I'm not sure of the number or anything, but we offer all of those citizens a resolution and a contract. They can choose to participate with our rural fire service.
And how many of them participate?
They can, I don't know right now how many's been turned in. Last year, I think we only had, I really don't know because I haven't looked, but we don't have a large number that participates. But they have the option.
And when they participate, that means we're going to go down there to that residence. Nobody who doesn't participate gets it, but the person who participates, we will come to their residence, if they're paying for that.
Because they're part of.
If somebody from Bridalvale is on, if nobody from Bridalvale's on that, we're not going to Bridalvale. Correct?
Well, that part, I don't know if I'm going to say correct or not correct. I know they have the option to participate in a contract.
And if you'd like to see the map of our service district, I mean, I can't, I don't think anyone can produce it for you right now, but it's certainly something we could do. We could ask the fire department to get the map of where the service area is.
Well, then you're going to have an issue with this, a map, a real map.
So you don't want to see the map then, or you do?
I'm fine with seeing the map.
Okay, we'll get that to you.
Yeah, that's not the issue.
Okay. So I also think, though, that if you do believe that our fire EMS service as a whole, then it's probably true that we'd be getting money and just dumping it down a hole. And I don't doubt that there's people that think of the fire department that way. But I do think that majority of the community, people who'd like to have a fire truck respond when there's a fire, people who'd like to have an ambulance and a paramedic there when there's a medical emergency, are not going to look at our fire EMS department as a whole. And they're not going to look at this as dumping money down a hole. So yes, it's true that there's people that don't want us to have a fire department here, but people that recognize the need for it are probably looking at this as a way that we can keep this service here in Cascade Locks. So we've seen what happens when we don't fund the service. We lose it.
Tom?
And again, this is how politics goes, folks. The fact is, though, the fire department's been going down the hole financially, down the hole for quite a while, and we still, and we aren't at the bottom of it yet. We've still got a whole bunch of bills here that are going to be looking at 9/11, and who knows what else is out there? And you can't blame the firemen for it, you can't blame the volunteers. They want, they want it framed, because that's who we're blaming. What I'm blaming is councils. Councils have not managed their own employees. And they haven't done a good job taking care of the money, keeping an eye on the money, as Gail says that they're supposed to be doing. They haven't done it. Now, you can put it on, everybody, that we're blaming the firemen for it, we're not supporting them. But the support for them is to make sure you're managing the funds that they've got to run their, to run their operation. Or their operation will go down the tubes. And you see that go on all over the country right now. Cities are going bankrupt, and they're going bankrupt from a lot of, from emergency services in a lot of them. Because, and it's not the emergency services people that's doing it, it's the people who are managing their money for them that's doing it today. And that's, and we got the same problem here, I'm sorry. It's how we manage the money, not how the volunteers and firemen go out and do their jobs.
So I guess the only thing I'd add to that is that if you want to keep our fire EMS service from going down the tubes like it did last year, you can support this and agree to fund it. If you don't, then don't support it. And they will continually go down the tubes. But what we've done over the last six months, and even longer now, is build this department up, following the advice of the regional experts. And in terms of what they've advised us to with finance, department structure, we've got a good plan in place, we've got good people in place, and it's time for a council to step up and, like you said, keep it from going down the tubes. And, you know, I believe the community's going to support that as well.
Come in, Tom. Okay, if there's no further comment, question, or discussion, we will proceed to a vote. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed?
Abstentions, motion carries. We'll move now to item 5D, the approval of ordinance 417, relating to municipal light and power system, regulating the use/sale prices electric current, and defining the security deposits and offenses, as well as repealing ordinance number 394.
Can we change that to repeal ordinance number 409? It was a misprint.
Is the misprint in the agenda only, or also in the?
It's also in the ordinance, it should be 409.
So Ruben, I'll just ask for your ruling on that. Is that a substantive change?
No, that's fine.
What was the number again?
409.
Okay, so we will make that change. This is also an item, there was a staff report prepared by Sherrell, approved by Paul, in our packet, so I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review the staff report, as well as ordinance 417. This is also the second reading. We've had a motion, a second, and a first reading. So now, having gone about a month since then, this is back for further action by the council. If there's any questions about the staff report, now would be the time to ask them.
So Ruben, addressing the concerns on possible accusations of discrimination, or do they, or they, the main thing that we're changing in here is allowing the administrator to make a call on, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, that's correct. And what we're doing here is we're changing the ordinance so that the administrator can make that determination according to a council-approved method. So we're not approving the method here.
Actually, Ruben, we do have that policy that we are approving.
As part of this.
Except for from the ordinance.
Yes, this ordinance, though, is just the, establishes the ability to set the guidelines by the council. And then the guidelines that we're going to be looking at are going to be something that has a criteria that's a bright line rule, so that there can't be claims of discrimination or favoritism.
And that's, and the administrator's the one that's going to name that.
Yes, council sets the guidelines, the administrator then carries them.
Were there other questions about this staff report? So we've had a motion and a second already. Ruben, would you do the second reading for us? Ordinance 417.
Ordinance 417, just the title only?
Title only, please, yes.
And ordinance relating to the municipal light and power system, regulating the use/sale and prices of electric current, defining security deposits and offenses, repealing ordinance 409.
And now, we have a time for council comment, question, or discussion on this ordinance. If we're going to vote. Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 417 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions, motion carries. The next part of this action item is approval of the utility deposit payment arrangement policy, which is included along with the application. We've seen these before. But I'll need a council motion second to approve this policy.
I'll move, we approve the payment arrangement, what do we call it, program?
Utility deposit payment arrangement policy.
Okay.
Or program.
Then, as presented.
We have a motion by Randy. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Gail has a second and a motion. Counsel question, comment, or discussion about this arrangement, program, or policy? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All those in favor of approval of the policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Okay, that takes us to the end of our action items, as we did item 5D earlier. So we'll move now to appearance of interest of citizens sharing a variety of perspectives and experiences in our community. So as we said earlier, we appreciate you being here. A number of you have signed up and asked for council rules. We're asking that you limit your comments to items that are not on the agenda. And Kathy will have a timer going, and if you hear the timer go off, that means it's been five minutes, and we ask you to wrap up your comments. Somebody says something that you agree with, they, so they're under, it's okay just to take the microphone and say that you agree with that. So, Rob, go sit down to talk about coal. According to the reports on TV, lean energy.
Rob Ross, out of Cascade Locks. Good evening, council, I'm there. I've come to ask you to pass a resolution against coal trains coming through the gorge to export coal to Asia, and call upon you to write Governor Kitzhoffer and let him know that this is not in the best interests of the gorge and Oregon. Coal is the dirtiest of fossil fuels. It emits more greenhouse gases than any other. Bossier, Hood River, Camas, Washougal, Port of Skamania County have already passed resolutions. The Accommodation has spoken against it. Resolutions are being considered in Portland, Seattle, Vancouver, B.C., and the Monmouth County Chair has spoken out against the export of coal through his county. Coal contains uranium, cadmium, lead, and mercury, amongst other heavy metals and toxins. Dust from the trains coming through the gorge is clearly displayed on Columbia River Keepers website, who also, along with friends of the gorge, oppose coal trains in the gorge. The proposal is for an additional 30 to 60 trains coming through here, some over a mile and a half long. This will more than double the train count coming through, double the carcinogenic diesel exhaust, and cloud the air with coal dust. I've spoken to a physician and been told this will lead to an increase in respiratory disease. Those living here with asthma and other pulmonary complications will be negatively impacted. Those living here with asthma and other pulmonary complications will be negatively impacted. And there are some in that category living along the tracks now. We have a school just blocks from the tracks. The signature park in the gorge is bordered by the tracks, it contains a pavilion used for public events. Cascade Locks is working hard to draw tourism, bikers, hikers, people involved in water sports. These activities involve cardiopulmonary action. Coal dust is not conducive to those activities. Noise and pollution will work against attracting tourists. Shading our beautiful vistas with coal dust will hardly be conducive to attracting tourists. Think of the trains running next to Monmouth Falls and its beautiful lodge. Coal dust will get into the river. It will be in the marine environment, taken up by plants, which are eaten by fish, which are eaten by other fish, concentrating lead and mercury with each step of the food chain, then eaten by us who sit at the top of the food chain. PGE is closing and retrofitting the bourbon coal plant to burn biomass. They also don't want coal exported from St. Helens as they are concerned about their gas-burning generator being affected by coal pollution in St. Helens. You have a proposal for a fish market here in town. Will this scenario promote people coming out as tourists and buying fish caught in the river? Will any other business benefit the gorge from coal trains? Coal and coal dust can spontaneously combust. We already have problems with trains causing fires along the rail lines. Do we need to increase that danger? The sheer length of the trains will block crossings, creating longer delays for citizens and emergency service vehicles coming to fight fires or help the sick and injured. Some of you have infants and babies. You want them growing up in an environment with polluted air? Please do what you can to stop the increase of pollutants in all of our area. There are other issues. Do you want to ship raw materials and jobs to Asia and get that finished product, leading to a larger trade imbalance? That's hardly conducive to building our economy and jobs. Why do this for the benefit of Australian corporation and other large corporations that don't care about your home, environment, and children? Please speak with one voice in a resolution against this, and please call our governor. Citizens can do this too. His citizen representative message line number is 503-378-4582. A real person answers that number, not a machine, please call. Again, that number is 503-378-4582. I want to thank you all.
Anna, here to talk to us about sailing.
I am a citizen, and you know me best by promoting sailing, right? Well, anyway, we had a very exciting Cacer North American Championship event. And I know, Rob, you probably saw more than two boat boats, right? Actually, we had a hundred and seventy-two actual participants, plus families. The park was just filled, if you drove by, you could look down there and just see, and also in the river. Boats all over the place. And to let you know, was the North American Cacer Boat Race. We had Canada, every province possible, plus Victoria Island, Mexico, Puerto Rico, Venezuela, Colombia, Virgin Islands, and in East Coast, a few that I wrote down here, Rhode Island, Maine, Florida. Lots from Texas, and of course, lots from California and Seattle. So your investment, that you give CGRA eight thousand dollars, and we have fifty days of events here. And it is a good return on your money. I've just checked with several of the businesses, and it just exploded because of this event. And when you think of giving four thousand dollars, and I love the boat walkers too, I think that they do... They're here for four days solid, but four days, and they get four thousand dollars. And I'm not saying cut them, but I think you get, if you look at this event and others that we've had, and how we've built from thirty-one days up to fifty, that the value in your eight thousand dollars is there because they are doing a great job of marketing. And also costly are the coaches, judges, and also the security people with the boats on the rivers. I asked Dave Kennard, who has two sons that have been very active in sailing, what he thought was a percentage of participants was, how many did he figure were coming here? Because we have heard that they're, for example, one person I talked to, they come up periodically and have been here for four years, and they're from California. But anyway, he thought that between twenty and thirty percent have been to the gorge. But twenty-five, another twenty-five, just occasionally. And around forty-five to fifty, first time for them coming to this event. And so we're looking at, with the families, had a lot of good comments about some of the families, well, they split up. Dad would watch daughter, mother would take some of the younger siblings hiking, and vice versa. So the trails are getting used, as well as the regatta event itself. All the hotels were booked, and also many were in Skamania too, because we have a shortage over here. And the camp sites were built. And I do want to thank you, I want to also share with you, our community sailing is really, is something that's special to me. And to get our kids here in town, another recreational that they can participate in and probably grow with the sport. But when you buy the swags that we sell at Christmas time, or just make your donations from the goodness of your heart and pocketbook, we appreciate it. So we are able to give some scholarships. And actually, if you'll listen, I'll read you a couple, well, actually, four letters. I hope time doesn't run out. This is from Chloe. Why, in getting a scholarship, the kids are now having to write a letter stating why they would like to participate in sailing. And this is what she says, "I think it looks fun, but I can teach other people, then I can teach other people how to sail. I will be on time every day and follow directions and listen to my coach." That's pretty profound. She says, "Thank you for giving me this chance."
So, so Anna, thanks. If you give those to me, I'll read them.
Oh, please, oh, please, let me read.
You want me to scroll?
Yeah, they're short. "I think I should get the scholarship because I am hardworking, good at learning new things, and it's only the sport I love. It makes me happy to sail. When I'm a good sailor, I will be able to take little kids out, and I am a very responsible kid. I will come early every time and help with the boats." And she... Jordan, from Jordan. "I want to go sailing because I have never been sailing in my whole life, and I want to know what it is like. I think it will be fun. I will follow directions and be on time, and every day I'm excited to have this opportunity. Thank you." "I think it would be very, be very awesome if I could get a scholarship for sailing because I would listen and I would work very hard to become a good sailor. I would also love, love to know how to sail because it would be very exciting to me if I could sail because being able to sail and help lots of little kids would be an awesome privilege. Sincerely, Anna." This is what we do for our community, dollars help with these scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Karen, she's here to talk to us about Parks and Rec.
Hello, I'm Karen Peck from Parks and Recreation, and actually, I'm from Cascade Locks, about thirty-five years, probably. I want to just tell you that the new programs, our program is going well, and we're trying out new things with the new Parks and Recreation. And our attendance has dropped a little bit, but it always does in the summer. But I'll tell you, for the reptile man, last Thursday night, we had about a hundred people in the gym. And I guess that was better attendance than what Park Inlet Hood River had. So, but we have people from Hood River here. Pam was telling me that, she had talked to them, and they said they were from Hood River.
We heard some of the reptiles escaped up into the offices up there too.
Really? I thought we kept it secret. They're chasing the scorpions.
Thomas, I bite foot.
He did, the guy, I think his name was Larry, I'm not sure. Mr. Reptile Man said that one of the reptiles that got loose in his car coming here. And when he left, he was telling the kids when it got out, he let it out of its cage, and it was the anaconda, I think he said, I'm not sure. But I didn't, I wanted to go to town, but I did not hitch a ride with him, so. But it was good. Now, this coming Thursday night will be, no, not this Thursday night, the next Thursday night will be Ice and Fire Show. I have no idea what that's going to be, but I, it's scientific, and I guess it's really good from what Busy was telling me. We have National Night Out coming up August the seventh on a Tuesday night. And Pam and Grant came up with an idea. The little kids right now are really into zombies. They're kind of taking the place of dinosaurs, which is surprising because, you know, dinosaurs have been it for several years. Quite a long time, in fact. But so...
Millions of years.
Yeah, they actually have been around longer than I have, and that's amazing. But they came up with an idea for Zombies Eat My Neighbors, don't let it happen to you. So they're going to give it, we are going to give a prize for the best dressed zombie, or the person who's dressed as the best as a zombie. We will be having free hot dogs and ice cream and sodas. And we're asking people to bring a side dish of food to share, and we always have lots of food, lots of fun. Safeway will be providing the hot dogs and all of that, and the Sheriff's Department will be bringing those down for us. And we have a program planned for that evening. So that, the evening is, it's the thirteenth National Night Out. We have something Hood River does not have. We have a National Night Out, and we have for thirteen years. Stevenson doesn't have one, but we do, so that's good. So the thirteenth Annual National Night Out, August the seventh, will eat at 6:00 P.M., and the program will be over around eight, and it will be held at the Marine Park Pavilion. Please bring a dish of food to share. And it's sponsored by Parks and Recreation, the Sheriff's Department, the board of Cascade Locks, CLAD, Nestle's, and the Cascade Locks Fire Department. And we have a couple of private citizens who have donated prizes. So we have fire extinguishers and smoke detectors and those kind of things that I always like to see as gifts. So that's what I have to report for you tonight, and I hope that you will all make it to National Night Out. And if you bring your family, have them dress as zombies. So it'll be kind of like a second Halloween this year. And I've been commissioned to ask the mayor if he will come and do the welcome speech that night.
I will.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful, that's good, thank you very much. And I hope you all come, because we always have to. Was that for the tiny cabbie? Of course, I wasn't a bus driver for thirty-two years for a nap.
Jeff, help us out here, zombies eat brains, right?
Yes.
So you ever run into any of those?
No, not, well, there was one down in Florida. Was that a guy in Florida?
Thank you, Karen.
So don't make the wrong impression, we had only four that had scholarships this year. But altogether, we have eleven kids that have learned to sail, so.
Great. Okay, so we'll move down to Martha, here to talk about food. And hopefully, that zombie food.
I'm going to put songs to you.
What brands?
Martha Lamont, representing Fish Food Bank, Hood River. They have, it's an artist rendition of the future home of the food bank in the ice and in Hood River. It will be, it will have a full kitchen and all kinds of storage. Right now, they're operating in a very old church that is kind of like functionally obsolete. And they've raised two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They have a pledge of seventy-five thousand from the Hood River Lions Club, and an international will match that if they reach the seventy-five. And after they get to five-hundred thousand, the additional five-hundred thousand needed to build the building will be provided in a grant. So they're closer than they expected, they're hoping to build this next year, get the people into a decent setting when they get their food instead of online. We're lucky here, we have the gym, but they stand out in all kinds of weather. So, today, we received a hundred and fifty pounds of food from the Relay for Life, which was held in... At the fairgrounds in Hood River County, I guess, that's in Odell, I was up there looking for the guy the other day. So that, half of that went to Mosher, half of it was designated for Cascade Locks. Basically canned goods and some baby products. But last year, they said they received eight-hundred pounds, this year they only received three-hundred, so they were kind of disappointed, but it's still pretty good, so. I just wanted to say, we're moving, we're very well organized, we have a good staff of volunteers, everybody's working together. And the food bank is Wednesday, to remind people, it will be Wednesday, starting at two o'clock, although we have been starting a little bit earlier. Our percentages are still astronomical compared to the other cities where there are very little change, even down in Parkdale. Between this time in two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twelve in May, our averages are up over a hundred percent. So we are really taking advantage of the Fish Food Bank. We don't get bills, we used to get monthly bills for the food that we purchased when Daryl was running it a few years ago. We don't get billed any longer, we get the food, we get better quality food. So just know that if you provide a check to the Fish Food Bank, it does go to their headquarters in Hood River. If you provide a product, whether it be household items or food, it stays here. But they are doing us a really big service. We don't have to worry about paying for it. That's why I try to get donations to those little boxes around town that people are coming through, visitors, especially now with the sailing summertime. It adds up, you know, you get a couple hundred a month. We just had the Feinstein Challenge, we're getting a check for just under three-hundred for that. I think there were around twenty participants in Oregon. So, I think that's about it, just remember we're there, and no one's going to be hungry.
Martha, thank you very much. We do appreciate our partnership with the food bank, and I want to thank you for your leadership and helping to bring us better for our community. Caitlin is here to talk to us about various things.
Did you pick up here? So, we're in my house here, isn't it? Last meeting.
There were just a couple meetings. It's been a couple of things that have been said that were incorrect. And then she said you were having trouble finding that Michigan water.
I was.
Well, this part, the website at the top has sixty-five pages, so you'll forgive me if I did not print it out for you.
I do forgive you.
Thank you. What you have in front of you, most of you, is an EK audit report that came out in October of two thousand and eleven. Thought it was about time we took a look at it. I thought it was about time that, because you folks are asking for information, that you started getting some information that you could look at on your own. I've been studying this since day one. It's been a lot of information, it's hard to understand a lot of it, things are changing in between. Some of it's pretty basic, some of it isn't. Now, forgive me, I'm going to quote a, some comments from the council member. The city would own the spring and the city would then at least the water rights to the spring and the city would control how much gets pumped. That's wrong. City would not own the water rights to the spring, that stays with ODFW. This is a three-stage process. First, the hatchery, which has been taking water from a different point of diversion than allowed, is requesting to correct that mistake. It's gone on about forty years as far as I can tell. That's application number T-11249 and is for nine-point-five cubic feet per second. Second application, number T-1118, requests ten-point-zero cubic feet per second. The third application is for the hatchery or ODFW to exchange the difference of point-five cubic water, cubic feet per second water with Cascade Locks in order for that, us to sell it to Nestle. City will not have control over how much gets pumped. No one will have control. That's not how this works and that's not what it is. There's aren't rights that are being sold. The rights will stay with ODFW. Anyone who has control over how much is pumped is ODRW and that will not change. That's the whole purpose of these applications. So the next comment is, so it's a totally different scenario. The irony of it, to me, is that if the opportunity to cite in Cascade Locks is ported by these outside interest groups that are just against Nestle, these are not just outside groups, these are Oregonian citizens. Over five thousand comments went into the water department. Oregon still owns that water. Until that third and final transfer goes through, which could be a year or more, that water belongs to them. It's not Cascade Locks water. This belongs to Oregon citizens and they're allowed to say what they want because it's their water, not ours yet. Third comment is, what's going to happen is that Nestle is going to buy a private spring. They've already told us that. Yep, they have. What they've not said is that we'll move the bottling plant to that private land. They're not going to. They want to, and I'm going to make a prediction here, have land and their bottling plant next to this highway. This highway that connects directly with Highway Five and they can shoot water up north because their next bottling facility is in Guelph, Canada? Or down because their next facility is in Sacramento where some of you will be visiting? They need to have both our municipal water and that spring water. They will come here and all the fighting's done and they will still purchase that private spring. And then they will probably truck the water here. That's what they do, it makes sense as a business. Next comment, and so in trying to prevent something that happened in Michigan from happening, what they're actually doing, what they could potentially be doing is creating the same scenario. And they may just pump that private spring and die, just like in Michigan, because that's a private spring, but this is not one. Also, we've got council members talking about, well, it's not as a false dilemma if anyone has ever taken a logic or debate course, or a false dichotomy. It's called an either-or fallacy. You're saying either you can vote to support the fire department by voting for these, or you don't support the fire department by not voting for these. That's a limited number of options when in reality there are more options than that. Reality could be, I like the fire department, but I can't afford nine dollars six to a month that supports it. Another thing could be, I like the fire department, would rather vote for the five dollars as recommended by the Public Safety Task Force, but not the nine dollars. There are other possibilities than vote for this and support the fire department or don't. And until we get past that part of the conversation, we're not going to get anywhere in this community.
Okay, Peter, here to talk to us again about coal, about coal look at.
Thank you. My name is Peter Pornellson, I am a field representative for Friends of the Columbia Gorge at two oh five Oak Street, number seventeen Hood River. As a former city councilperson at, at a different time, a different city, I thank you for your public service. It's not always easy being on that side of the table. I'm pleased to be on this side of the table with Rob Rostoff. He's quite a force to be reckoned with, especially on this coal issue. He's recognized ahead of a lot of people that really, there's no positives related to this proposal to ship coal through the gorge. Just to back up a little bit, sort of the lay of the land is, there's giant coal deposits in Montana and Wyoming. They've been sending most of that coal to the east to power car plants, electric power plants, but those markets are drying up because the power producers are switching to natural gas. So the coal companies want to send the stuff to Asia and this is the cheapest and quickest route. And because of the Cascade Mountains, it's pretty much all got to come through the gorge. They may send some of the empties over different rail routes above the top of the Cascade, but most of the coal is going to come through and most of the empty cars are going to go back this way. So, as Rob said, there's a number of cities in the gorge and all up and down the rail lines that have already passed resolutions against coal. And there's good reasons for that. There's basically no positives locally and it's a detraction from our quality of life. Noise, pollution, both from coal dust and from diesel, delay crossing the tracks, especially at the industrial park, both concerning emergency access and commerce, frequent derailments, I don't know if you saw the Hood River news, but about two weeks ago there was a derailment in Pasco for the coal train. If it had been another half an hour further west, it would have ended up in the river. And there was, and there was, the same weekend, there was, there was one in Chicago in which two people were killed. If you're concerned about exporting our energy resources, that's another good reason to oppose it. And finally, climate change, if you're concerned about climate change, this is a major driver towards climate change. So, I have a draft resolution to give you tonight in print. I've got eight copies and I know there's nine books around the table, but we'll supply it to you as well in an email version. And there's also a website that lists all the other resolutions that have been passed by all the other city councils up and down the line, which we'll reference for you. And in closing, I'd just say the important thing is to, essentially what's going to happen is there's going to be environmental impact statement, kind of like what was required for the casino. But the first part of that is the scoping, in other words, how broad a scope to make it, whether it's just going to be a doc on the Columbia or whether it's going to be what's happening at the mines, what happens all the way along the railroad and what happens at the export bricks and also what's coming back from China. So, we're asking for as broad a scope as possible, an area-wide environmental impact statement. And if, if you choose to pass a resolution, we'd hope you'd include that in. So with that, I'm going to pass this around and thank you for it.
Okay, that's it for comments on issues based in the community. So, we'll move now to report some presentations. As I said at the outset of the meeting, I've got a tip to cover items that Paul would have otherwise covered in his report. The first item is a discussion of the city administrator process and extension of Paul Hook's contract. So, I know most of you have received the staff report, two pages, the back of your packet attached to this. I wanted to kind of give you just the update, the short version in case, in case you didn't make it that far, but Paul, Gail, and I met to look at the thirty-three applications we had for our city administrator position and with the purpose of narrowing those down. And we did that, as it says in here. We eliminated a few of the applications, we've got five that we'd like to continue with telephone interviews and, and another nine that we're holding, that we're holding back for something potentially later. And our intent is sometime this month to conduct telephone interviews with the top five candidates that we identified and then report back to the council. As a result of those interviews, we find that we have candidates, it would be wise for us to pursue the formal interview with full counsel. Next month, we'll do that. If we find that we'd be better off, better suited waiting, then we'll report that back as well. And what this does is it creates a scenario in which fortunately we have Paul's agreement that he'd be willing to stay with the city through the administrative recruitment process as long, as far as the end of March next year. And so if we were to find the administrator candidate that we'd like to hire before then, his contract would have a thirty-day termination clause, so we'd have thirty days to do a transition with Paul here. And then, then we could, we could bring in a new person. We wanted to wait until the end of Paul's contract, we want to have the hire done by the end of February. And he's agreed to extend his contract that far with the, with the flexibility built into it, that if there's a point where we want to bring in a candidate, we can. To be able to do that effectively, as you know from reading the back of the staff report, we would need to ask the city attorneys to prepare amendments to his contract and then that would be formally approved on our action, action agenda at a future council meeting. So, have you presented that? I guess I will open it up for council question, comment, or discussion. Gail, is there anything you wanted to add to that? Did I get anything wrong?
No.
I appreciate Paul's flexibility. We talked about thirty days notice, is that going to be calendar days or working days? Because there's a difference in the language.
You know, I, just off the cuff, I would say calendar days, but I'd also turn that over to Ruben.
Typically, it would be calendar days. If, in general, if things are fewer than ten days, well then there's some argument that maybe it's business days, but when you get it to the thirty-day window, then it's calendar.
Any other questions coming or discussion on that? So at this point, I'm just going to ask for a council consensus. I think that the consensus would be that, that Gail, Paul, and I continue with our plan to conduct those telephone interviews with a report back, one way or another, and then we direct Ruben to prepare amendments to Paul's contract. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the consensus. Those of you who have been kind of tracking Paul's updates through, through email know that we had a failure of our water system telemetry program, that's the electronics that control the water system. It still operates manually, but we don't have a staff structure designed to operate it manually and in fact, we don't want to. But what that's done is it's caused a situation where we need to move quickly to, to get that system replaced essentially. Catherine, I know you have some information, just a little bit of information about, about what's that been doing in terms of going out for, trying to figure out how much this is going to cost us. That's still a process, right?
The only information I have on it was, I think just hearing somebody talk about it in the office, however we know, but I think that they're out looking, trying to get this and how, and see how much it costs.
Right. So Paul has indicated to us that this is going to be, that this is a, something that's been budgeted for in the current fiscal year budget, but that it's also over his spending ability. He's suggested that since it's such crucial importance to the operation of the water system, that, that he would, you know, make the decisions to replace this without going over the budgeted amount and then come back and seek council approval for that after the fact, because it is so time sensitive. Since he's not here tonight, I'm assuming he would have had a presentation and been able to tell us what the dollar figures are. I think it's important that we just acknowledge that, either disagree that no, he should not be approaching it that way, or agree that that's the appropriate way to approach it. So what I'm going to ask for, just as a council consensus, that, that our direction is that first of all, our priority is to make our system work appropriately, that we stay within our budget in doing that, and that Paul, you know, seek, seek council approval and that's, if it's possible, at a council meeting before it's purchased, if it's not possible, at a council meeting after it's purchased. So, I hope that was clear, but that's just, that's kind of what I think he's asking for and I just want to find out if that's something that we have a consensus on.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
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 Okay. So, I'll send Paul that, or when he gets back, I'll talk to him and make sure he understands that's, that's where we're at. If you would look on your desk, there were two documents given to you. One looks like this, sixty-one pages there of staffing, adequate fire and emergency response, which is acronym is SAFER Grants Program. And a one-page document, which is an email sent to me today by, by our interim fire chief, Devin Wallace. And so essentially what Devin is telling us is that the application for this SAFER Grant, which is a program that Department of Homeland Security has for rural volunteer fire departments to, to pay for staffing, to help meet the requirements of NFPA and OSHA. They actually, for two years, they actually fund the, they fund a firefighter employee for, for departments. As, as you can see there, as you'll be able to see when you look at the document, this is not one of those grants where there's matching funds, there's absolutely no cost to receive it. In talking with Devin, Hood River applied for this last summer and they actually have two positions that are paid for and will be paid for for the next year through this program. And it doesn't cost Hood River anything in fact, what they found is that it actually makes money because those two positions are able to generate revenue. The only requirement, well, not the only requirement, but the main requirement, as you'll see in his email, is that the city keep the position filled for two years. And if there's ever a time when it's not filled, you have to count, you have to do the reporting. His, his comment was that Cascade Locks- His comment was that Cascade Locks has a good chance to get this grant. He says, "There's no promises, but it's a good chance." So the policy is that council has to approve staff applying for a grant before they can do that, and so that's why we're bringing it tonight, so that we can have, just by consensus, give our approval for staff to apply for this. I talked to Devin about it. He would be the one to write this grant. He successfully wrote this grant last summer, and as we said, there's a good chance we will get it. So, questions?
Is that also staffing that could be used for paramedic? Or is it only firefighter?
Well, I mean, the title of the grant is adequate fire and emergency response.
Okay. Either or?
There's a number of varieties.
You said the requirement was to keep it funded for two years. That's the two years it's funded under the grant?
Yes. It's not, you have to come up with money yourself. No, it's to keep it, you keep the position filled with the funds that they grant you. Okay. And again, no matching fund, no cost to receive. Okay? Any other questions?
Well, just on the face, it was like it's a good situation for it. I think, you know, same thing happens. I have looked at, we had some questions here, we're in paramedic, I have all the same kind of questions too, so I'm saying, you know, that's a pretty difficult statement. Look through that a little bit.
Yeah, the reason why it's coming forward now is the window for the grant opened up, I think, on July 16th, and actually closes on August 10th. So before our next meeting. So we need, I mean, if we, if we're going to apply for this grant, we need to give staff the approval to do that. If there's objections that come up between now and August 10th, then you should certainly make those known, so that we can, you know, not use the staff time to apply for the grant. But there's a, it's a real short window, so, and we can't just put it off until the next meeting, or else we're just putting it off altogether, not applying for it.
So I guess my thing on that is, this is something that, you know, I was saying, it just came on up, and we got a little bit off course. I remember Jeff Cerfey talking about this two months ago, not tonight, but months ago, where you could have, people were talking about it. And I'm surprised or disappointed here again with things where you got to hurry up and do it instead of, you know, in a responsible way where we had, I think we had a chance to. Jess brought it up, as I said, a while ago, but now we're, now we're pressed to do it. Now, it looks like on the front, on the cut face, it looks like it's a good deal, but it's going to take a look at it for, and I wish we didn't go along with it.
Kim?
Can we vote?
It's not a vote, but just a consensus. Do you think the staff should pursue?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Paul? Okay. So I'll send Devin a notice that we have a consensus. Next item was scheduled to be presented by Paul. Is, at the last council meeting, there were two public comments suggesting that we needed to look into, we needed to investigate the budget process. And in my conversations with staff, Paul, and others, there had been an internal investigation of budget process. No violations of budget law were found. In addition, Paul contacted the Department of Revenue, and no violations were reported back from them. We do expect Paul to have a more detailed report, but I just wanted to give that update, that we've had that internal investigation, no violations found, and that Paul's also moved it on to the Department of Revenue, and no violations were reported there either. So I also want to point out to you that either in your box or on your desk, we have our monthly report from CH2M Hill about our sewer contract, and then at the back of the packet we have the sheriff's report. In the month of June, there were 144 calls in Cascade Locks. One deputy spent 135 hours here in town, and then other sheriff's office personnel worked an additional 76.75 hours in Cascade Locks, and that was awesome. And there's a couple meetings that might interest people. July 24th tomorrow, 10:00 a.m., public work staff is getting together to talk about the water system issues, as well as the request for quotes on our water and sewer system Also tomorrow night, the Lions Club is meeting. Tomorrow night at 7:00 here at City Hall, the Downtown Revitalization Steering Committee is meeting. Tomorrow, the representatives from the port and the city that are part of the Joint Work Group on Economic Development are traveling to Sacramento to look at a water bottling plant run by Nestle. July 26th, the Joint Work Group is meeting at the Pavilion at 7:00. Also at 7:00 here at City Hall, the Planning Commission is getting back together. And I wanted to point out, we've had a notice, and we'll continue to get this information out, Bonneville will be shutting off the power to the city on August 11, starting at midnight and going to 8:00 a.m. And then on August 12, starting at 11:00 and going to August 13, at 3:00 a.m. So this is something that's, I think they do this during the summer, speaks up on us, but it is important that we just pass that message on. If you have any questions about that, I know you'll be able to call City Hall and verify it, and they'll give you the update.
The information will be going up in the YouTube.
Okay, it'll also be on YouTube. Okay. Okay, so that's all I had on the staff report. We'll turn now to mayor and council comments. Jeff?
It was good to hear the sailing, all the success for that, and there was, I don't say it's a rumor, but there's speculation or something where council was told, or there's a, I guess it's a rumor that council wants to unfund the CGRA, and we've never had that discussion, that funding source is still there, we see that. We've been a part of that, went to the one event, Ribbon Cutting. I don't know the source of that information. The person that has brought that forward, I'd suggest, ask that source and say where it came from, because it didn't come from this council. It has never come from that. I think part of it, you know, when it first started, maybe there was some unknowns, what CGRA was and where the boats were at and stuff, and that's, you know, with the tourism committee, they've done a good job of getting that information out there, pushing it, you know, in the last six months, I've seen it, where the tourism has done a good job of that, and educating people what goes on, and that's the hugest, that's the biggest hurdle, is communication, and it's getting communicated out there.
I think it was also in discussion that came from budget.
So with that being said, this council supports it, and as far as I'm concerned, I do, and I believe, I can't speak for the rest of my council members, but I do, I do support the funding of the CGRA through the tourism committees.
That was a big event. I was moving down from Hood River and looked out at the river, and I had never seen so many sailboats out there. There was just a ton of them. And then there was something over on the Stevenson side, but between the trees, outriggers, you couldn't see them all.
You know, actually, we did 172. The other events, like that, that's been held in the USA, we far went above any east coast.
Well, I don't remember what day it was, but it looked like they needed a little bit more wind, because they were just kind of out there, just hanging.
They loved it.
The other evidence of its success is all the, I'll call them kids, but they're college, walking through town, moving between the rental houses and the hotels, and it was just great to see it. Great to see the Canadian flag out for the people. I heard, here there were some complaints that there wasn't a U.S. flag, but the U.S. team, I'm sure, had flags up too, so that's just something we'll have to get used to, is seeing other countries' flags up during these events, and it's just going to happen. And it should be encouraged to do that.
It's just kids.
Hood River County Fairs this week, so Wednesday it cranks up and gets started. Cascade Locks has been a huge participant in that in the past. 15 years ago, we had more Cascade Locks participation than today, but more than the rest of the county had, in the 4-H building anyway. It's down right now, but those things go through cycles. So be sure, be sure to hit there. It came, it came to my mind, because Rogers Weely recently passed away, he used to come out there and take down people's names, and he was always just floored that there were so many Cascade Locks people entering in exhibits out there. The other is, I do hope that we bring up at some future meeting, the coal train, not the entertainer, but the actual trains out there coming through. So hopefully, we'll bring, that'll come up, people will see.
You're talking about?
Coal train, not soul trainer.
John Coltrane, the jazz saxophones.
Hopefully, we'll bring up the rest of trains.
I don't imagine making, just making the train visually subordinate would work, I don't know. Anyway.
So that's it. Brad?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what everybody else said. It was great to see so much activity in the town this weekend. There was literally a boatload of people, in fact, several boatloads, but it was neat to see a lot more people out and about, you know, than in the past. Maybe it's just because of sheer numbers, but a lot more people getting out and visiting the businesses, and all the businesses benefited from it ourselves as well. So that was, it was awesome. It's good to see, we visited with several of the sailors, and they're talking about there's an Optimus event, middle of the week, and then next weekend is the Moth, is the Moth Nationals this next weekend, and in a few weeks down the road is the 29ers, also national event, so is that, am I correct? Is it, how, anyway, so.
And we might get the 40, we have Tasers World event next year, and in the talking stage is the 49ers.
Yes, I got educated about all the different breeds of boats this weekend, about, anyway, several different, the Optimus class, the Laser class, the 29ers, and.
49ers.
So lots of, lots of people out and enthusiastic, so it was great to see.
Okay, Gail?
I'm not going to echo anything, but, hey, do you know anything about, if I recall right, there have been some meetings regarding our CATV and CenturyLink? Do you have any information on that?
We don't have an update on that, but we're hoping to schedule a work session with, I guess it's GorgeNet that's interested. I don't think it's Century. Have you heard something about Century?
No, sorry, GorgeNet.
Okay. So GorgeNet is interested in pursuing a private-public partnership with the city for providing cable and internet service.
So would the work session be with the council, or a work session with staff, or what?
With the council.
Okay.
And the community.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Just segueing, segueing into what the rest of the councilors are saying, that.
Except Gail.
Oh, that, or segueing. The parking lots were filled up, and, you know, the, I went down to the port, it was this packed, even the, you look at the river, the rowers, I mean, just the amount of rowers, you know, and be nice if every weekend was like this, you know, it was nice.
Yeah, I'll tie along on that. I'll echo it.
Echo, segue, tangle on.
Put some wind in the sails.
Well, yeah, the sailing was huge. I'd like to thank soldiers and Hates, they really promoted the sailing in here. They really get involved on the Thursday night, so this is a weekend thing, there's people coming out here, but every Thursday night, there's free sailing for the kids. We've got boats, we've got people out there, we've got a boat that'll go around there and keep an eye on you, and I don't know if I should say there's food, or, but I don't, I don't adore it, I think the kids do, honestly. Thursday nights down there is a big night for local kids, or local anybody, it's supposed to go down, and it's free. They have boats, and they're doing it every Thursday, and if you want to get involved in this thing, a real class in, come down there, they help kids put the things up, we've got boats, and bring kids, bring the thing down and give them a tour of the lot. Now, one of the things, one of the things I know is, I pick up, I get these garbage cans from the port, so one of the things I can tell as people are coming through is there's becoming a ton more garbage, and, and when I pick it up, I don't go through the garbage, I go, this is good. And it's obvious.
They throw it away, Tom.
Well, there's a lot of stuff that comes from like East Wind, drive over there, it's obvious they're buying lots of things from our businesses in our community, and to want the garbage can. But there's a lot more garbage happening, and I think garbage definitely, there's a relationship between the amount of garbage and the amount of people, amount of economic benefit, so, and it's, garbage is drawn, so.
Do you have any recycle bin, Tom?
We do.
Are they recycling anything?
We attempt to, but sometimes we find that recycling gets used in, not always for recycling, pretty often things wind up in recycling bins. But yeah, there's an attempt to, there's an attempt to do that.
We also get people actually from Hood River that are bringing their sons and daughters down for our wins, and we have, time before last, a couple from the towns. So it's getting, it's expanding.
Okay, thanks, Tom. I just wanted to also give kind of a report on some background, I've been, research I've been doing on Nestle and their relationship with this, with other towns, particularly the county in Michigan. But before we do that, I just wanted, I also wanted to point out, as I said earlier, the Joint Work Group between the port and city on economic development will be taking a trip to Sacramento to look at the, at the water bottling plants down there that is, would be scheduled to be shut down if they were to site a plant here in Cascade Locks. And if you have any questions or concerns, things you want to find out about that type of plants, then make sure that you get those questions or concerns, things to look forward to Randy and Mark, because they'll be going along on this trip as well, as I will, and representatives from the port also. And we found out that there's a group on August 1st, which is a Wednesday, and they've scheduled something called Run Against Nestle, and they're planning to use Cascade Locks as the staging point for a series of different runs to the local mountaintops. And there's a group of people in town that are planning a response to that, and, you know, the idea is to set out some signs that give, give your opinion about economic development or bottled water, or the concept of a bottled water plant here. And I think there's going to be, Brad was mentioning to me before the meeting, that there's going to be a sign-making group getting together tomorrow. Is that true, Brad?
That is what I hear. I believe Jesse Groves and Samantha Vershuren are probably contact people for that, but there's going to be a group of citizens getting together for that event, and I imagine you can find out from Jesse, and they'd probably love as many people as possible to get involved.
Yeah. And one way, you know, one suggestion was that we hand out bottled water to all runners, because, you know, you get thirsty, I mean, we're talking running 20 miles, and it's real convenient to have some bottled water. When you're thirsty. So anyway, that was, there's been a number of different suggestions, but I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that, a group descending on Cascade Locks, looks like from Portland, to share their viewpoint. And I think in the evening, they're planning to meet at the pub, Civic Chris Pub, so. Also, an update, we were told about a month ago, my visitor from Michigan, that her town won Supreme Court case in Michigan against Nestle. And I think I mentioned it last time, and Kate said something about that also. What I found is that they actually didn't win. The Supreme Court of Michigan ruled in favor of Nestle. And it's one of those things where they, no one really won. They just remanded the case back to the lower courts for disposition. But essentially, what was at issue in the case was whether or not people that had no standing on the lakes and wetlands that were in question could be part of the suit. And this kind of highlights one of the big differences is that, in the case of McCosta, which is a county in Michigan, there's a group called Michigan Citizens for Water Conservation. And they were suing Nestle because they felt that Nestle was draining water out of a local lake. Subsequent to the Supreme Court ruling in favor of Nestle, Nestle actually contacted this group as well as their neighbors on the lake and signed a cooperative agreement with those folks to limit their pumping to two-hundred-and-eighty-one gallons per minute. That's what Michigan, Michigan Citizens for Water Conservation were asking for. And that's what Nestle agreed to, which was down from the four-hundred gallons per minute that the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality had approved when they gave the permits. So, you know, what I found so far is that, I haven't been able to actually contact, get a call back from anyone from Michigan DEQ. But what's been quoted in several different places is that the preparation work that Nestle did for the permitting process was impressive. They'd never seen anything like that, you know, in terms of detailing water that's available, water that they plan to use. So, and as you dig a little bit further, what you find is what happened there was Nestle purchased a spring in Michigan and planned to pump water to a facility where they bottled it. So one of their neighbors owned a hunting preserve on a nearby lake. And they were complaining that the water, you know, their business was affected by the water level of the lake going down. So totally different scenario to what we have here. Interestingly, what the Michigan Citizens for Water Conservation were asking for from Nestle was that they reduced them to two-hundred-and-eighty gallons per minute. That's actually significantly higher than what Nestle would be taking out of Oxbow Springs if what's being proposed now at the Water Resources Board is approved. So even if you look at those two situations, what happened in McCosta with what's being suggested here, Nestle would be taking even less than what the environmental group wanted them to take in Michigan. And as you dig even further, you start to find out Nestle experiences further back east and so on. And, you know, my general impression has been, in reading these things, is that Nestle, as a company, was very aggressive, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, in terms of finding water sources. They went so far as to do telemarketing campaigns to the local communities to try to, you know, to get their message out in opposition to what maybe the elected officials were saying. But over the past ten years, those kinds of stories just disappear. And in their place are stories about these kind of cooperative agreements where Nestle works with the local communities, kind of like what they've been trying to do here, and try to find win-win situations for communities. So, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what's about to happen here. But you can kind of track that progress from a real aggressive company to one that becomes more and more cooperative over the years. And I think some people have also seen, just on a different note about bottled water, the city of Portland had to issue a boiled water order for the whole west side of Portland. From the land, or west. And what we found was that people on the west side that weren't drinking water out of the taps anymore were drinking bottled water. And so we found that, you know, that was a need, you know, in the case of an emergency like that. I mean, I'm sure some folks boiled water, but I think a lot of people just went to the stores and bought the bottled water. So it's certainly not a place in Portland over the last couple of days. And there's other stories about things like that. But one of the things that did highlight to me is that I think it's important, as we move forward into looking at what they call bottled water politics, I would like to see us develop an emergency plan that kind of establishes what are our priorities in the event of a water shortage or a water emergency. And I think it would be important for us to start kind of establish that health and welfare is important, is the priority for water. So people having access to drinking water would be the priority, it's not gonna be a business. And I'd just like to ask for a council consensus that we at least start the discussion and pursue developing a policy for an emergency plan, just in the event that there is a water emergency here in town. Because my understanding is we don't have that right now. So is that something you would agree to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess. Yeah, I just, well, yeah.
Yes, okay. I mean, we can discuss it too, if you want.
Yes.
Okay. Like Gail, I'm not gonna echo anything, people said already. I had a chance to meet with some of the racers and some of the volunteers that are part of the Columbia Gorge Racing Association. We were all invited to a dinner that they put on for the racers. And so I had a chance to talk to a number of people about what's happening here in Cascade Locks, how excited they are to be here. You know, just like with our, we mentioned last time with our Cascade to Crown Bicycle Race, a hundred people sign up for it, three hundred people show up. Same thing here with the Laser Regatta. Seventy people sign up, more than double that that actually show up and race. And I was just real excited to have my daughter down there yesterday to look at the sailboats. And the timing of it is we walked out, it was right at the end of the race. So we got to walk down the, pass the marina, through the parking lot with a lot of the racers. You know, I'm proud of the new Cascade Locks, we have a bunch of friendly people. And, but I think that these folks fit right in, just as friendly as the bicyclers last weekend, or two weekends ago. And just really did fit in. And the other thing that was starting, as Randy started to talk about, was the flags. In a sense, you kind of felt like you're walking through the United Nations because there's a lot of different languages being spoken. I didn't mention it, but I could've sworn I heard some Italian, the guy had the little Italian flag and...
Spanish from southern.
Well, I know the difference. Yeah, so, but then the other thing that was mentioned at the dinner was, you know, the comparison with, I mean, between Cascade Locks and Lake Garda in Italy, it's kind of, you know, the race is empty on which is the best site in the world. And they're leaning towards us, you know. And so it's just, it's really exciting for them. And it's, as we've mentioned already too, it's exciting for the kids to get an opportunity to participate and to learn sailing in such a world-class location. And the other news is Columbia Gorge Racing Association is growing because of what they've been able to do here. They're, you know, we've been, we've looked at it as limited to just July and August, and fifty days within that time. They're starting to give requests for what our tourism committee calls the shoulder season. And there's requests for races in September now. And so that's expanding. And CGRA is looking at, you know, trying to go from an all-volunteer organization that they were, you know, two years ago, where, you know, maybe they could run operations Monday through Thursday. They're now operating fully volunteer seven days a week. And they're looking at getting some bridge grants to try to hire full-time staff people so they can continue that expansion. And so, you know, what I told those folks, it's just a great partnership, we're very glad to have them here in town. Additionally, they wanna support economic development in other ways in Cascade Locks. So when we think about our multifaceted economic development plan, what's happening now is, is sailing being one slice of that pie, it's now expanding. And, you know, I had a conversation with the head of CGRA, who's been here. And he wants to know what CGRA can do to support the Nestle opportunity in Cascade Locks. He's been trackhead in the newspapers and so there's all sorts of things. We also discussed the idea that, you know, this adventure economy that we're building in Cascade Locks, it's on the front page of the newspaper, is, you know, really, you know, can tie in with sailing as well because a lot of these top sailors train by mountain bike, that's how they train for sailing. In fact, I talked to one guy who, every day he was here for the lasers, was mountain biking up past Sermon Creek and through the woods. I couldn't quite get how he got to the end though on a mountain bike, but he was stuck in that, going that far just in the morning before the race. And so we thought of the idea, well, let's do like an alternative triathlon where you can, maybe you can sail to one location, jump on your mountain bike, maybe there's some sort of, you know, paddleboard or jog or something we could do as another event, to try to bring in a lot of these different outdoor opportunities. And we've also had conversations about, maybe we need to start looking at, you know, combining our stern wiener days with our festival to celebrate sailing and kind of reinvent that to promote this identity of the sailing community. So there's a lot of exciting things that are going on with our partnership with the Columbia Gorge Racing Association. And I think we need to pursue this and expand those possibilities. I wanted to mention coal because I also agree that there's a lot of reasons why shipping coal through the gorge is a bad idea, or for that matter, shipping coal anywhere is a bad idea. But I also wanted to share my opinion that, as frustrating as it is in terms of economic development in Cascade Locks, to try to fight against outside interest groups putting their two cents in and telling us what we should and shouldn't do, it's hard for me to sign on to then become one of those outside groups, trying to tell someone else what they should do. I certainly don't wanna be raising my kids brilliant gold dust from the drains. But I also don't want, I want us to focus on Cascade Locks and what's best for Cascade Locks and try to stay out of the larger politics until we can get to a point where we've developed that economic growth. Now, I guess if we're going to do some sort of resolution, like other communities in the gorge are doing, I'd like us just to consider a way to stay positive about it as opposed to, you know, saying, no, don't do this. Like, we've heard so many times about economic development here in Cascade Locks, don't do it. Do something, don't do it. One of the things I know, friends of ours are, a friend of ours is an engineer of one of the railroad companies. And this person would probably get in trouble if it came out that this was happening. But what they will do sometimes, as they're hauling these long trains through Cascade Locks, is they'll stop to, you know, to do a check while someone runs up to east wind and brings back ice cream cones for the conductor and the folks working on the train. So maybe we could suggest that if you have to have a coal train coming through the gorge, stop in Cascade Locks, they could slow down through the river, stop in Cascade Locks, buy the obligatory ice cream cone, and slowly move out of town so the coal dust just kind of settles on the train, doesn't get spread into at least our lungs.
Or into their ice cream.
Or into their ice cream, yes.
Coal train.
It's a new flavor of ice cream. So I hope that if we are gonna bring that up at some point in the future, that we find a way to stay positive about it, like, here's something you can do to make this beneficial. And I appreciated our friend from Friends of the Gorge suggesting, you know, the positive thing to do is let's look at the big picture here. You know, it's not just what happens at the site where it's shipped, it's what happens to the mountains that get cut down, you know, to the people along the train and so on. I mean, you know, government suffers a doctor, so maybe he should be looking at the health impacts of this as well. But I just really, I hope that we can kind of caution ourselves in trying to avoid being that group that tells someone else somewhere else, no, don't do this, because we've just had that too often here in Cascade Locks. Okay, that'll do it for me, thanks, thanks for your time. Next item? You wanna get back?
One sailor that was here was, I think, from Maine. And he had a story for about Nestle and how it's been working. And I think I had his, his part on it. He worked on a barrel bill thing where a lot of people are taking their method and their way of operating this bill, it's become a real successful, a successful way of, to get returns on plastic because everyone wanted out the lime tails. But Nestle's helped, helped with that.
Yeah.
It's got something on it.
Yeah, he lives in a, there's three different Nestle's plants. And he said it's been nothing but positive. And Paul in Chuckville catches me.
Yeah, Paul sent us an email. Yeah, I think that kind of reflects what I would find in my research is a company that's gone from being, you know, super aggressive and trying to dictate things to a company that wants to work with local people and collaborate. So again, it's not something that we know was gonna happen here, but it's certainly a trend that you can observe. Along the lines of that, Kate's given us a preliminary analysis of economic issues. There's a, the state economist Bruce Sorty has been doing a study. He's gonna be giving his report at the next joint work group on Economic Development Meeting, which is on Thursday at the Port Pavilion. So if anyone wants to hear an Oregonian who's looked into economic analysis of what would be here in Cascade Locks, should come next Thursday, or this Thursday at seven to the Pavilion. Okay. Next item on our agenda is other matters. Anyone have other matters they'd like to discuss?
See none, we don't have an executive session, the last item is adjournment, is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Jeff, second by Gail, discussion?
Yeah, let's do it.
See none, we see two votes, all those papers come by by saying hi. Opposed, extension, or she carries.